Heavenly Father, let's begin with thank you for the opportunity you've given us to come together in your name, to do what the citizens of our great city have asked us to do. And as usual, we ask that you give us wisdom and guidance to do what's best for all. We especially pray for all those that need your comfort, that you will continue to keep us safe as we go about our daily lives. In your precious name we pray, amen.
First, our business, obviously, is to prove the minutes. If everybody's had a chance to look those over, I entertain a motion. Make a motion. Motion made by Glenn.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We need roll call, Tom?
Yeah.
Yvonne.
Aye.
McFarren.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
Bowns.
Aye.
Five eyes, no names.
Next on the agenda is approval of the claims. Once again, Yvonne had a chance to look those over, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
Motion made by Tim.
Second.
Seconded by Jose. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call.
Yvonne.
Aye.
McFarren.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
Bowns.
Aye.
Five eyes, no names.
The only other thing I have today is basically, I think we, I said something after all of you all about the spirit of Jasper and the fact that we're trying to get some train to come from Jasper to Huntingburg for a couple bombers games this year. We've been fortunate enough to negotiate some, I guess, a good situation for the city is the fact that DuBois Wood Products has agreed to donate a piece of land for that. We could put a ramp there to disembark the train with and so forth. As well as maybe in the future, if it gets bigger and bigger, we might be able to put a little terminal of some sort there or depot of some sort. But the only thing they ask for us is just to show that they gave us a donation value of what the tax appraisal would be. We don't have to pay them anything for that, so obviously that's not a bad thing. So before we can accept that, we have to have council approval to accept the donation. I'll make that motion to approve the donation. Motion made by Glenn to accept the donation.
Okay.
Seconded by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call.
Yvonne.
Aye.
McFarren.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
Bowns.
Aye.
Five eyes, no names.
Awesome.
Very nice.
It's nice of them to do that, but you know, obviously it's a property they're not going to use anyway. So it's, it kind of worked out best because if you look going down the railroad tracks, the train disembarks on that side, on the west side, to the east side, so that would work out really well that way. So that's pretty cool.
Hopefully we can work with Jasper and get more trips.
Well, that's the whole concept eventually, that we can maybe even go all the way Frenchly.
That'd be great, that'd be cool.
We might be able to make some, some more green space or something in that little panel. Well, it's kind of a underused, the underused section.
It's got potential.
The only thing that I have is I think you've got a copy of the program events report, obviously this with graduations in May coming up. Old town all been busy, we've been trying to get things going. Obviously, Fourth Friday starts coming up this Friday, so a lot of things are going on that everybody needs to just know about, so. I don't see the transit assistant dog Easter here.
Yeah, it's been tabled.
Oh, it's been tabled, okay, okay.
Needs further discussion.
Is that for that update of the drug policy?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, John.
Hey.
Don't push any buttons, John.
Yeah.
I think we just did.
Huh? Uh-oh.
I gotta get Rob, I see the mouse moving.
Oh, there we go. He was trying to get Jeff back on the screen. Hey, Jeff, glad you've joined us back again, even though you didn't know you weren't joining us.
I didn't know I was going.
Start on the gas side. We added another six services last month. Three applications on file. Three of them were over in the Ireland area and three of them were Hunter's Crossing here. And we did replace five services that were needing replacing. They're old services and we've been changing out some of the gas meters to the new census gas meters. And we've noticed a couple times where the valve underneath the meter, it was a little loose. So we determined there was a coupling under the ground, which is out of code. It's an old service, we don't have no records of it, pressure test or anything, so we pretty well had to go back to the main and run a new service so we can get all the information documented. So we worked on that. Couple of them we had to bore because of tight areas. So we didn't get that done. Then they did replace a four-inch plug valve, seventeenth and Medical Arts Drive. It's right at the intersection, it took several days because it was a conglomeration of gas. They all come together right there, so we had to, took a little extra time to get all that done. So that was two or three day affair. Then we've been replacing, like I say, replaced fifty house meters this month. Continue to do it, it's just a slow process, but we're changing some out each week. And then, looks like we're gonna have to have, with this new census gas meters, we're gonna have to probably install two antenna tires, one in the Ireland area and one over by the Stendell area. We put some sample census meters out in them areas. We can't get a, can't get a read because it's too far away, so I got a rep coming in Thursday. We're gonna go over the antennas. They're suggesting they did a prop study and we're gonna put like eighty to a hundred foot tower up and put the antenna on there to enable us to get the reads for the gas meters. So we're checking into that.
Who's responsible for that, for putting in the tower? So I mean, since it's, I mean, I know we're pre-supply the gas, but can we raise the, would they raise the rates for that?
No.
So we just suck it up?
Yeah. It's just part of the census, just part of the new metering.
Is there a tower we can add on to? Anybody else that we can climb on to?
They did a prop study and they pretty well said the location we have to put it in are pretty close to our Texas Eastern tie-in and our Midwest tie-in. We own the ground there pretty well, so we can.
We don't have to, we don't have to get into an agreement with another water utility or cell phone utility.
We have electricity both at them locations, so we wouldn't have to have another meter charge. We would put antenna tire somewhere else. We're gonna have to get power to it, pay a monthly meter charge.
Plus it'd be a lease agreement or a use agreement and all that.
Be our tower. Would Jasper need to do anything, could they add on to the tower too, so we can split it up?
They're so tight, they're close enough, I think they can, they did their own study. We're spread out so far, like I say, we go a mile north of Ireland and we go probably three miles west of Ireland to the Pike County line.
That would be the only.
So we're pretty far out there.
Yeah.
That's the only utility that we're gonna have this issue with, electric won't be that way and anything, I don't think will.
Electric should be pretty good, we go to St. Henry, but we should, electric meters I think are the best.
The easiest to read, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Am I hearing then that gas is gonna pay for this?
Yeah.
You'll get quotes or something.
I did get a preliminary quote, it was like eight grand a antenna tire.
It's not even bad.
And, but that's the cost of the tire, didn't you gotta pay to, pay to have it installed, which.
You did it on your Saturday afternoon.
Saturday, yeah.
TV tower.
It'd be a tripod tire.
Tripod TV tower.
Straight up.
So it shouldn't be, it should be minimal.
They recommended eighty foot, but I talked to a guy that does tires and said, might as well go a hundred feet because there's not much price difference and will that twenty extra feet make?
Oh, yeah.
A lot of difference because trees keep growing every year.
Yeah.
Trees are getting taller, so. So hopefully find something out this week. We have one intent, we have one antenna, I think, if it will work, because we replaced the, was it South?
Yeah, South.
We took the directional down, put a three sixty there. I'm gonna see if that directional we took down will work at one of these tires. That's what I'm gonna check on Thursday when he comes.
Yep.
So we won't have to maybe buy one, just one antenna instead of two.
Yeah, if you're having your, if your antenna is at the, you know, at the fringe of your, of your territory, I would assume directional would work because you're directing it back to Huntingburg.
We go a mile north of Ireland, we go three miles west of Ireland. And the Texas Eastern tie-in is out by the John Deere dealership.
Be close.
We'll go back a mile. So that's something we'll have to, we'll have to figure out. Any questions on the gas? Electric side, placed three new services, which were at Hunter's Crossing. And we replaced four poles on County Road eleven hundred and run new primary wires that had old copper lines. Replaced them with aluminum, about fourteen hundred feet. So we got that all done. And there's two houses along the highway sixty-four. They're upgrading one of the houses to a larger service. And they're, we're gonna go underground, so we've had some issues out there before with trees. So it was best decision, we went underground where both houses are gonna be underground, so we just kind of eliminated that. No problem. And then I'd like to congratulate Austin CAC for testing out of year two of the apprentice to year three. Doing really good for us. And last month, I was talking about the batteries for our substation. I'm still checking on that. We're checking with some other vendors, some other utilities on what kind of battery system they got for their substation control sheds. So we're still checking on that.
And those are backup batteries, right? Only backup?
Well, they, when power goes out, they run the relays.
So they're, they're the backups?
Yeah. They keep the relays in power, so when the power comes back, the relays kick the circuits back on. We wouldn't have that and we wouldn't be able to turn everything back on without the batteries.
Right.
And then finally, a few months ago, I was up at EMA and they were discussing a grant that they are working on. I have included the pages on that. It is a grant for the meters, the electric meters. I had several questions. Two months ago, they just said they're coming out, but they didn't have much information on it yet, so I did get some information. I did ask about the gas and the water remaining meters that would need to be changed out if they're included. And the electric meters, if, I got an answer back, it said the gas and the water were not included, it's just the electric. And for the electric to be included, you cannot have your meters changed out partially. In order to get this grant, you gotta start, you can't have any meters in your system. You gotta purchase all your meters, once this grant is accepted. It's through the Office of Energy Development. At EMA applies, Office of Energy Development, which in turn they've replied to the Department of Energy. The grant won't be, we won't know if they're accepted until the end of the year. So I did file the paperwork with EMA for the city of Huntingburg for the grant. Out of sixty-one communities, there's fourteen that applied and we were one of them. So hopefully I'm, we're gonna get it. It is a reimbursement. And they said the reimbursement won't come till probably the spring of twenty-four, once they do get, if the grant is, becomes available. And the city of Huntingburg is qualified, so we will pay them for the meters upfront and then we'll get reimbursed following proper paperwork. Because I'll be filing paperwork with the Department of Energy and EMA to stay in the guidelines for the grant. And I did have a figure, what the grant would be worth at the bottom there.
Pretty good money.
We have about thirty-six hundred meters. And it's, and EMA does work with a Tandilist company, Itron meters. I did inquire if we had to go with the Itron meters. And I said, since we have the census water and gas meters, the census would qualify for it. She did reply back and said it does qualify. We don't have to go with that certain brand or company. And so that was good to hear. So our meters, once we purchase them, we can install them, start installing them. But I gotta wait until the grant is awarded before I can start ordering meters.
You can't do a partial anything, you gotta all or nothing.
Yeah. And I will need a, one of the requirements is, I need a commitment letter from the council that we will pay for all the meters upfront. So that will come later. I'll have more information as the months go by. But that is good, it's a good grant, I mean, fifty percent.
So if the grant doesn't, we qualify or we don't get it, what happens then? Do we just buy them as we go, as you need them and just keep going on track like that?
Yeah, we'll just have to buy them as we go. Right now, we've been having trouble getting electric meters and it turns out that's a.
What's gonna, yeah, what happens?
It worked out good.
Yeah.
I've been on the salesman to get my meters in, but.
Maybe not.
Now, it's a good thing we didn't. And I gotta meet with him, he's coming down Thursday, I gotta meet with him and talk to him about this grant application so he don't start sending me meters.
Yeah.
Because I'll reject them.
Hold that thought.
Yeah.
Hold that thought.
So. And Phil, I don't know how, if I order these meters with that amount, is there a certain procedure?
Yeah, it's, it's, there's only one source that's compatible with our other meters, so we would, we would probably be able to negotiate a price with that supplier without having to take bids because it's the only, the only product that's compatible with our other meters.
Because he sent me, I asked him for a quote for the meters and he sent me a quote, what the meter's gonna cost now. So I gotta see what, you know, if we gotta wait till the end of the year to see if we're, the Office of Energy Development is gonna get the grant from the Department of Energy. So then we can start purchasing meters and I don't know what rate we'll have to purchase them at.
Yeah.
And they're talking about reimbursement over a quarter, quarter period, instead of one, just big check. But the Office of Energy Development will hold the money, EMA will not hold the money. But we'll, I will send paperwork into EMA and the Department of Energy. So once all that's certified, the Office of Energy Development will release the money to the communities.
Because John, you mentioned they do that in quarterly periods of time, though not like in the spring of twenty twenty-four, they wouldn't give us a one lump, some check at that point, they would just give us one quarter of that, correct?
And that's still to be determined on when?
When did you say they would announce the award?
They said the fall of twenty-three. They said it could be, be by the end of, it should be by the end of the year. They were just saying fall of twenty-three. EMA had to turn all their paperwork in from the community by May fifth. So I got all my paperwork in to them. Like I say, there was fourteen communities and we were one of them.
We're not committed on any purchase orders on our meters currently for delivery date or something, are we? They couldn't, my recollection is they couldn't promise you to deliver them by a certain time or something.
Like I said, it's, there's still more information to come. So like I said, the amount of meters I can order, Phil, is, I mean, you can see the amount.
Yeah, well, if it's, if the council or the board approves it and finds that there's no other source.
Yeah, there's only one company that sells the census.
And you could, you can be authorized to buy even though it's that amount. But I guess my question is, do you, would we want to commit ourselves before we know we've got, got the grant?
No.
No.
Yeah, that's what I was.
So we just need to hold off?
Table it until we get to.
Yeah, we'll hold it off until we know that we are accepted for the grant. Once we are accepted for the grant, then we can start purchasing the meters.
If not, you'll just purchase them and phase it in over time?
Yeah, if we don't get the grant.
We'll do that, we'll go back to plan A.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
But I figure it's worth a shot.
Close to coming anyway.
Yeah, the ones we, yeah, well.
It's worth a shot, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try for it.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Just have a question, how long will we have to complete the project if we can't get the meters?
If we can get the meters?
If we can't get them, how long will they give us to get the project completed?
Is there a time limit to get the meters in?
Still be determined.
Yeah.
Because if you can't get the meters.
I think that's a, that's probably a statement.
Hopefully by maybe the end of the year, the supply chain issue would be where you get mirrors quicker. They'll get, start getting caught up because Jasper is, they're in the process of changing theirs out. They were having a hard time getting them last fall, but now they're starting to get them at a pretty regular rate. And I think I talked to him up at EMA meeting Friday, I think he said they're about seventy-five percent complete.
Are these census also?
Yeah.
They have good luck with them then.
Yeah, they're all census, gas, water, electric. So hopefully giving some more time that the lead time shortened.
Yeah, anything else, John?
Should've did any questions on electric.
I did want to comment on this, is commend your team on these gas services where they're, anytime they find anything, when they're doing a change out and they're, they're going back and you guys are noting, you're staying, getting ahead of that game.
Yeah.
I know how regulatory that, that is for you guys and it's really, they're doing a great job.
It's not too many.
Getting ahead of that and staying, staying there.
Some of these older services are.
Yeah, have been in touch for decades, some of them, probably.
Something would happen and how URC come down for investigation and we wouldn't have any records, then it'd be on us.
Yeah, so kudos to that, to the team for jumping on those.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else?
No, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Scoreboards are working.
I know. They got two of them.
Two of them.
At the new field, they have two of the new scoreboards up today.
Oh, they're on different frequencies?
Well, we're not sure yet. We have to start using it, we have to wait and see. Hey, Jerry.
Gentlemen, I will start with distribution. Our spring fire hydrant flushing and valve turning is finally finished. We got setback two weeks with a couple water main breaks that were fairly large. Speaking of the water main breaks that kind of set us back, I included a picture of one and it was at First Avenue and Van Buren Street. In that picture, that's actually the top of the water main on this one, where the one at Eighth and Washington was the bottom.
We didn't get it.
I don't get a picture.
Are you for real?
That's you, the IT guy.
Must be the IT guy. We just talked about this today too.
What, where was the address at?
It's First and Van Buren. There should have been.
First and Van Buren, that's a big boy.
Right, yeah.
That's a big boy there.
Yeah, so the Eighth and Washington, I included a picture last, last month on that one.
I told it, didn't it?
Yeah, both of them.
Buckled it?
Yeah.
Disappeared, didn't it?
I walked it down earlier today.
There it is.
Okay, all right, so you did get it.
Thanks, Rob.
It's, it's in a weird, it's in a, a different spot.
It's in a weird spot, hung out.
Is that in border work?
It was just the document, list of documents under the, under the agenda.
Okay.
So that's it, just pretty much show and tell for that one, we had to cut that section of main out and leave a piece of pipe in. It took, took quite a while, those guys were here for about fourteen hours that day. Pretty much right at the end of the workday, everybody just got home and called everybody back in. So with that, after that was done, we did replace a valve at Eighth and Shelby Street that had failed, that we found during our spring flushing valve turning. And also, we found two fire hydrants that had failed, that we were able, they were newer, I say newer, they were early nineties, late eighties model Mueller hydrants that we rebuild, we don't, we don't give rid of them. They still make parts for them, so we were able to rebuild the two fire hydrants. And then we had a hydrant valve, an auxiliary valve that runs to a fire hydrant at Long Cove. While they were turning that valve, the top of the bonnet blew off the valve, so we had to, we had to shut that down and get that put back together as well. Now that we've got our new trusty hydro excavator, it makes things easier to tackle in the road. So there was seven valve boxes in the roadways that they either were broke on top, the valve lids didn't fit in them very well, and sometimes a car will kick a valve lid out, or the valve boxes were just pushed over so far, it was hard to get a wrench on. Before, we didn't want to dig a two or four foot square up to reset a valve box, so we, we just did what we could do with them and go on. Now we're able to get in there and get them reset fairly easy. We also, we got a call from the park, their backflow preventer at Luke Stadium had cracked. So Luke Rashi is certified in that, we spoke about that last year, about having all that work done in-house. So he went down there and took care of that, he installed it and had it certified. And then cleaned up some downed trees from the lake, from the storms we've recently had. The ground's finally dried out enough to get in there and take care of that. There was two things that I, I missed on there. We did install four new services at Hunter's Crossing this month. And we, Huntingburg hosted the IRWA Southern Expo at the park, that was last week.
It was crowded.
It was. It's people from all over the Southern Indiana come to that. Our, our employees go to that, we send them to that for, not only do they bring new ideas, new equipment, new tools with them, but we also, wastewater's included in that, they were down there as well. We get our continued education hours for our licenses that we have to have for that. So it was a, it was an all-day event on Thursday and it went great. So other than that, I'm jumping back to that backflow cross-contamination thing that we spoke about last year, about bringing some more of that in-house. I've been wanting to get more of that away from third-party companies and brought back into the city. So Blake Lindar and myself attended a backflow cross-contamination class in Evansville two weeks ago and we both, I went for more of the knowledge side of it. And then, but we both did receive our certifications and we are able to inspect and certify backflow devices, so.
Good deal.
With that, moving down to the filter plant, we had a float system in our wet well. We installed a wet well when we redid the water plant. It brings the water from the lake into a well and then pumps it up to the water plant. A little more efficient than the way we were doing it, with just gravity flow out of the lake. Whenever they installed that, they installed some floats directly in line with the water that came into the wet well and it eventually broke them and so we, we kind of, we got in there, re-engineered that to where it's behind the water that comes in from the lake and got all that taken care of. And then we had a chemical feed valve that had failed, we replaced as well. Our new metering system, we, I did get a phone call today. We're gonna get eighty of our last order of residential meters that you guys approved a couple meetings ago. We will start to see those come in, so we'll get back on that. And then we are waiting on some larger diameter meters to finish up the system completely. With the other business, I spoke with Tom about this, there should be attachments for that too, as far as quotes. The quote process I went with is kind of lengthy because I wasn't sure if we would be able to do all three blocks. But if you guys have been down the four, five hundred, six hundred block of Second Street from Maine to Washington, it is horrible. We've had multiple water main breaks there over the last few years. When we replaced the main on Main Street, we, it was an eight-inch main, but it was choked down to about a six or a four. We put an eight-inch back in it, we've got more flow, we've got more pressure, and we started blowing that water main out again. I shared my concerns with the mayor last year and he put a, put in for us for some money for water main replacement in the ARPA grant there and we were approved for forty thousand dollars. I did go ahead and get three quotes. It's broke down per block because I wasn't sure how much we were gonna be able to do with the forty thousand dollars. We can actually cover all three blocks. The lowest bid was utility supply locally here in Huntingburg and the total price on that was thirty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. That's just material. That, that leaves about thirty-four hundred dollars into that for extras if we would come up to something that we don't see underground. So I would like to see if we can get permission to go ahead with that. I did talk to Tom, the three companies that we had bid, Utility Supply, Corn Main and EJ Prescott, they are all eligible to use for that grant, so.
What was the total amount again?
It was, the total amount was thirty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents.
And that's the, and that's for three blocks?
Correct, that's. Correct, that's just material, uh, and that is replacing, so we have found being up there in that block, uh, with all those repairs, there is some lead service lines up there that, uh, we haven't replaced because we wanted to include them in our lead copper survey. Uh, once that starts, we're hopeful to have all of the lead out of town before October of twenty twenty-four, the deadline date. That, uh, they just want the, uh, inventory done, we wanna be done with it right at the beginning. But, um, they do require that you have X amount of percentage removed and at the time of the water main breaks, they were all late in the evening, so we didn't go back in there to replace those. We've, we, we're, we're aware they're there, they're marked on our maps. So, uh, this, this does replace every service line on those three blocks as well, whether it's lead or copper. Uh, we've seen the way copper reacts with our soil and we'd like to get it out of there and replace it with poly, so. That's, that's everything for meter pits, new rings and lids, uh, setters, the poly service line, tracer wire, all the fittings, pipe. And, um, with our Hickory Street main project that we did last year, we purchased six hundred and eighty-foot of temporary water main for that project. So what we'll do with this one is we'll set our temporary water main up and we'll just do it a block at a time. We'll set our temporary main up, we'll get it, uh, our back T samples on it passed, we'll replace the four hundred block first and then move our water main down and just so forth until we get our three blocks done.
Very well, that'd keep you busy.
So.
So if we need a motion to, uh, to approve, you seeing that money for that?
Yeah, I, I do have a question, um, this, this applies to everything mechanical.
Correct.
Um, backfill material.
It does not, this dollar.
Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, you have enough money to cover all that, the three blocks?
We do have enough money to cover as far as about the sand and the, the pavement and everything.
I, I suspect so, but I wanted it because.
That's why I didn't get nitty-gritty with the prices on that.
Cause you'll, you'll have all that extra.
Right, yeah.
Because of all that, all the backfill material and.
Keeping it in-house, we, we've got five guys for forty hours a week, so.
Hey, Jerry, is there any plans to repave that section of street?
Uh, I talked to Jason, it's not on, um, I know he did a community crossing grant, he just filed for that, it's not on there. Um, with that being said, we are gonna replace that directly in the trench that it was in, just due to all the utilities in that area. So, the, the patches and stuff that are there, they'll be dug out. Um, once it's put back, it'll be a continuous straight patch, um, so.
But there's also one, Jason has budget, his, his budget for street repairs and things too, so we can probably cover it with that two hours soon, so.
So as far as we're paving the whole road, I don't know the answer to that. Um, I mean, I, I know it's, the way, the shape that the road's in, I'm sure it's on his, his list to do. Uh, and we did talk about it, he's, uh.
Second street, yeah.
I, uh, I got told that would be a future project, um, you know, it's, I don't, I don't know how, with the, the school being tear- tore down, what's gonna happen to that, um, you know, there might be some development there, we might end up having to put more infrastructure, take it out of Second Street into that area. Um, so it might be a good idea to wait till the city determines what's happened to that lot before we do actually pave at least that block.
Absolutely, good point, thank you.
Yes, sir.
What, uh, so you're going to an eight, eight-inch?
Maybe six, um, that, so there's six inch from Main Street, sorry, um, to the middle of, uh, the five hundred block there between Jackson and Van Buren. And then where the alley is, we've got that big storm culvert, it drops to a four inch, and then it runs four inch from there to Washington Street. We are gonna upsize that to six inch. Um, all of our fire hydrants that come off that four inch lead, they are orange tops, they don't promote, produce enough gallons per minute. Uh, so with that, with those fire hydrant replacements as well, we'll see a, um, rise in our ISO scores, so insurance will go down. I mean, it's, it's good for everybody at that point.
What is, uh, potentially, what would this development, unknown development, would that be fed off second? Would it be fed off Van Buren, would it be fed off first?
Depending on what it would be, if it would, if it would be a development of houses, I would like to see it tied into two streets. Um, whether it's second to first, depending on how they're laid out, or, you know, just depending on where the services come. If the services come from the road, we would just run services line, lines like we do, uh, now. If there's potential for that to have a cul-de-sac put in the middle of it, maybe, we could run it from first to second, nobody knows, right. But we could run a main from first to second and feed all those services off that. You know, if there was a road in there and a cul-de-sac, we could feed it off that, we could still keep a grid system. Uh, we don't like dead ends, dead ends turn to troublesome problems with water quality and everything else, so.
I'm not questioning you, I'm just asking if you're.
Yeah.
If that has any consideration.
Right.
I know anything you do at this point will be a huge improvement.
It'll be a, and that, that four inch that runs from the middle of that five hundred block to Washington Street, it's, it's in extremely bad shape as well. Um, I, uh, I'll have to bring you guys a picture of a water main, what the inside of it looks like. Like the eight inch and whenever it's full of. Yeah, I, it's, it's pretty choked up and we, we get a lot of dirt complaints in that area as well. Uh, that four inch is old, uh, the city hasn't replaced four inch with four inch in a long time, they always upsize to six. Um, and as far as the need to upsize that main to feed anything else, there's, there's really no need in that. Um, a lot of our mains through the city are six inch connecting to six inch.
So what would the end of the line be, what would the, the last block?
Uh, so it, it would be from, um, Main Street to Washington, down Second Street there. And we, when we did Washington Street and we killed that old six inch main, we brought our tie-in out of the intersection.
That was my question.
And installed a new valve, and installed a new valve, so we're, we, thinking ahead, proactive, that's right. We like to stay proactive.
Okay. With all of that, I'll make a motion for Jerry to approve the purchase of materials to replace the water mains.
Motion made by Steve. Second, second by Glenn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, roll call. Yvonne.
Aye.
Ferrin.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Kistling.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Five eyes, no names.
I'd like to just say thank you for upgrading that four to a six, cause that is a big help.
It is, it's huge for everybody in the community, it's a lot.
Fire flow and everything, so that's good.
Yeah.
I have another question, the, uh, on the backflow contamination, would you do that for people who have them? Would you service or inspect them?
That's something we're working towards, I haven't opened that can yet, um, just for the fact that we've only had one employee certified and that's something I don't wanna get, I, that's, that's where I'm going with the pro, the, I, I'd like to take it to that point. Um, but with just having Luke certified, I didn't wanna s- jump into that and then something happened. Uh, if we'd start that program and, you know, something happened to Luke and he wasn't around no more, we'd have a program with nobody to, uh, do that. Uh, with that being said, you know, it's Blake, he's our meter tech, um, he's our next guy, easiest to get away. Uh, so I, that's, that's where I'll be here in the next couple of months. I'll get with Phil and we'll, yeah, I'm sure there's some legality that needs to be discussed and I'll, uh, I'll be proposing that in the future. Um, there's a lot of communities that they, uh, the, the backflow and cross-contamination, it's such a, it, it can be very problematic for a distribution system, if somebody's not up to code or they don't have their stuff, uh, certified. Um, we use a company called BSI right now and they send us letters, uh, they send us one fifteen days out from somebody that needs to be certified and then they send us another one on that fifteenth day if they haven't been tested and their ha- their paperwork hasn't been turned in, and we shut the water off. Uh, I had to do it last year to Pizza Hut, they wasn't happy about it. But that comes back on the city at that point, once, once we know about it and we're negligent, we're liable for it.
Who, 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 who would these people, they'd have to contract some?
So right now, we leave it up to the community to contact their own plumber that's licensed to certify backflows. Um, there's a lot of communities around us that have taken that out of it, um, I like, I like people to have choice. I don't know if we need to go straight to taking it away from all the local plumbers and just doing it strictly in-house and making everybody follow that. But what other communities have found is when they do that, they still have negligence, the people still aren't getting them done. You know, it's essentially the business owner to call and have it certified, there's still people that doesn't get it done and you're still in the same boat. Um, like I said, a lot of these other communities, they've taken it to where it's strictly, they do every backflow and cross-contamination device in their city, so they know it's done and it's on time.
Do they charge for that services?
They do, um, and what a lot of them has done is they've went to local plumbers and got pricing and kinda set, because most plumbers, they set it by size, they don't set it at an hourly rate or something like that. If you've got a three-quarter, one inch, two inch, they set it by size for that.
It's a flat rate.
Right, it, it is a flat rate, and then, you know, if it fails, and you do have to rebuild it or something like that, we're capable of that. And at that point, our, uh, is that, that's called our Empa rates, if I'm not mistaken, get that right? Where they tell us what we can charge per hour, and then we would just, from that point, we would charge what we pay for material plus the hourly rate that Empa allows us to charge for man-hours. Um, and then from there, I mean, if we would do it in-house, it would just get billed, their monthly bill and, and, and go on, you know, I would, uh, that's the best, the best protection for the city would be to do it in-house completely. That's, we've got a lot of.
Be done how often?
Every year, annually.
I'm not familiar with that, is that a big ordeal to do, or how's that?
Uh, as far as doing the testing, it's not, it's not a big ordeal to do, um, the big thing is if it does fail, you know, it's technically, you know, I D M says if it fails, they give, they give the city, the city the leniency to leave the water on or shut it off because you're responsible for it, and if you poison a bunch of people in the community, it's your head that's gonna roll. So, um, but they, uh, you know, they stress that if it's bad or failed, shut them off. So, you know, it's Farbest, they're, they're one of our big ones, uh, all of our, all of our, um, I shouldn't just point out Farbest, but all of our commercial buildings, they're, you know, high hazards. So, a lot of them, when they put them in, they'll put two in. So, when they test one, and you don't ever test them at the same time, you test one, if it fails, you're still flowing water through this one while this one's getting repaired, and then, once this one's fixed and it passes, then you test this one. Um, so that's, a, a lot of, a lot of bigger places that have to have that water, they'll set up two backflows. That way they can still run if something happens. You know, it's, I don't, uh.
You're done and zing.
Right, definitely, I mean, it's, it's, at that point, it's, sounds dumb and it's costly, but it's, it keeps your business running. Whenever there's an issue and you're, you know, it's, the big thing with water is it's, everybody drinks it, it's a huge public health issue.
That's right.
Yep.
Yeah, other than that, that's all I've got.
Anything else for Jerry?
Nope.
Nope.
Looks good.
Alright, thank you guys.
Phil, do you have anything? Tom?
No, nothing.
Anything for any of the council members?
I have something.
Okay.
Uh, last council meeting, we had on our agenda and we tabled it, the Jan Holinger request letter. And I apologize, I did bring a copy of that and I can't find it on my computer. If you remember reading it, basically, uh, he owns what used to be the LG building, I can't remember, that address, three hundred and something problems?
The one next to Mama T's, right?
Yes. Um, he had requests the water be shut off from, he was out of town, weather, weather getting bad, make a long story short. So he called the city, has the water shut off so it wouldn't freeze water lines. Uh, supposedly, there was no record of that being done, so he was being charged his meter fee, uh, for the whole time and Deb, he did finally realize because he was getting dr- auto- automatic pay, he'd been paying for the water when he would in fact was shut off. It, the city's done a great job, Jerry did a great job, and Deb, Deb's done a great job trying to defend the city, but, um, the resident or the occupant of that building is not happy and I find sometimes in my businesses or staying camps, if, if it's a request that we can handle, make everybody happy, the claim was for six hundred dollars and he was supposedly paying utilities, roughly six hundred. Um, my suggestion is, is we split the costs, let's give a three hundred dollar credit to, to the person, apply it to that building to be used only, and when he does reconnect, then he'll have to pay his reconnection fee and all that. So, if that would be sued, well, I'd make a proposal to credit three hundred dollars to settle this claim.
There's a, is a important motion, Glenn?
I'd make that form of motion.
I'd also point out, there was no water used or, so, there's no sewer, sewer, actually sewer expanse or water expanse, because nothing was used.
There's no, there's no expense to the city as far as.
Yeah, there's no usage at all, it's just a matter of, he was getting charged and not realizing it until he was doing his taxes that he was getting deducted for the utilities.
Is there any release or anything that we?
We can put something together, yeah.
Uh, so, there again, if you guys can get a letter and have him sign it, that, uh, with kosher, that's my proposal.
Okay, there's a motion on the table?
Uh, adding to that, uh, wouldn't, would he, is there a reconnect fee?
Yes.
He would be responsible for.
He would be responsible, Mr. Holinger would be responsible for the reconnect fee.
Yes.
And we, in this, three hundred dollars would be in the form of a utility credit?
To that account.
Instead of a?
Payment.
Payment?
That can be done, right?
Uh, we can do something for three hundred, I'm not exactly sure.
I think it'd be same with people paying, uh, every month and getting reimbursed at the end of the year.
For that, for that particular address, it would be a credit on future utilities from that specific address. Does that make sense?
That's correct.
For water only, just for water and sewer?
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer for that particular address. If those were the, if those are the parameters, I would second the motion.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, I'll take your vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call. Yvonne.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Where?
I abstained.
Bounce.
Aye.
Five eyes, no names.
No, I abstained.
He abstained, him abstained.
Oh.
Cause he's a friend of mine, I, I, I'm not.
Okay, four, four eyes, one abstain.
One abstention.
There you go.
Big word, abstentions.
Could get it out fast.
Anything else from the council? Oh, we have no other citizens here locally tonight, Dan's on here tonight, we can't do that?
Motion to adjourn.
Well, wait, I got one thing, we can't forget, we got Memorial Day services.
Yes.
Saturday at Veterans Memorial Park at the ten o'clock, it's the DuBois County Veterans Administration or Veterans Associations, all of them. And then again on Monday, uh, the VFW is having their services around different cemeteries on Monday morning, just as a reminder for everybody.
Are they doing the memorial as well then, or just the?
Yeah, they're still doing, the VFW is still doing it on Monday at the memorial. I think there'd be after Saint Mary's, Fairmont, and then the Veterans Memorial. But then on Saturday, it's the actual, the whole county organization like we did last year.
That was interesting, last year.
Yeah.
Now getting back to this, uh, credit, he has to agree to it, right?
Uh, we've had a discussion with him, he has, he is agreeable to the.
So he'll sign, he'll sign.
As long as he signs it, then he's agreeable, probably is, okay.
Yeah, I assume it's contingent upon his agreement, huh?
We've had a discussion with him, he is in agreement to the settlement.
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Tim.
I'll second it.
Second by Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's roll call for that? Yvonne.
Aye.
Ferrin.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Kistling.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Nice job.